Okay. Okay, welcome to the meeting of the Larkspur Planning Commission of Tuesday, August 23, 2022. Can we? Lee, I'm just, I think we're seeing participants arrive still.
You want a roll call, right?
Yes, can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Swisher?
I'm here.
Commissioner Kunst, I'm sorry, I have an old agenda top because I didn't change it. Commissioner Campbell?
Here.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Here.
Chair Chalmers?
Here.
And for the record, our new Commissioner Wilson?
Williamson.
William.
Max Williamson.
Is absent.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on matters which are not on the agenda? Any comments on the public?
I've seen no raised hands. So if you have comments, you should click the raised hand icon on your screen. We have one.
And there's one, one phone call, one call in person, you can hit star nine if you want to comment during the public open time.
David Hollander has his hand raised, but this is for matters not on the agenda. David, did you mean to raise your hand?
We are covering your matter next and under the public hearing items.
His hand is raised. I'm going to allow him to talk. David, you need to turn off your mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. So this is about our matter, correct? That's what I was going to speak about.
No, we're matters not on the agenda yet, right at this point.
Okay, then I will just wait until we get there.
All right, thank you. So this, what this topic was regarding any comments which are, which anyone would like to raise on matters not on the agenda. So moving on, can we have the planning director's report, please?
Thank you. I just, I'm happy to report that we have two new planning commissioners, Liam Campbell and Max Williamson. And I also would like to report that the decision that you made for 355 Britannaway has been appealed to the city council by the down slope neighbor. So that'll be heard by the city council on September 7. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the public hearing items. You have two items on the agenda tonight. The first one came up before the commission, I think it was two meetings ago, relates to the RFA SUPV HT 2150 24 Laurel Avenue. Can we please hear the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Chalmers. It sounds really good, by the way. So the applicant is requesting permits to demolish all the existing improvements on the site and grade it to create a driveway access and construct a new three story, single family residence with an ADU. This includes removal of the majority of the trees as well. Required permits include design review, floor area ratio exception, a slope use permit, a variance to permit three compliant onsite parking spaces, a variance to permit a driveway paving cover that create that can't even say this, driveway paving that covers more than 50% of the front yard area and heritage tree removal permits. You previously heard this application on June 4, 2022, the project. After due consideration of all of the permits and the comments from the audience, the planning commission closed the hearing and confirmed that you were generally supportive of the project in concept and it was an attractive home. However, you did ask for a variety of things to be addressed. First, you asked that they confirm from the city engineer that the driveway turn would function. You indicated that the proposed floor area and scale were too large for the site and that it would be visually imposing and some ideas to reduce the bulk and massing were suggested. And lastly, the majority of the commissioners indicated there should be more effort to save trees, particularly the heritage redwood tree number 15. In conclusion, you continued this hearing to allow the applicant to pursue modifications to the design. The applicant has submitted the revised plans that are before you tonight. A comparison of these plans indicates that there are incremental changes detailed in the staff report throughout all the elevations. Generally, the modifications reduce the net FAR from 1.39 to 1.37. As requested, the applicant also provided more detailed civil plans that show two diagrams on sheet C6 demonstrating that the driveway design can adequately function on the narrow roadway. These designs utilize a Toyota Camry that's 16 feet in length and a Prius that's 15 feet in length. Lastly, as submitted, the project plans indicate that the existing heritage tree number 15, the redwood is no longer proposed for removal. However, there are no significant design changes that would support its preservation in a notable way. In the plans itself, staff noticed that the access stairway is practically touching the trunk. The home foundation remains five to six feet away from the tree. And the civil plan show trenching right through the tree in order to put in the drainage. So there will be some changes required if the tree is to be saved and the commission approves this as proposed tonight. But because there's so many potential impacts, any revised harvest report hasn't really stated clearly that the tree can be saved, that they provided a variety of ways to try and save the tree. Because that's the case and there are potentially significant impacts, staff has continued to advertise this as a tree removal permit. In conclusions, that finds the applicant has proposed incremental modest modifications that generally appear to meet your direction. They've slightly reduced the overall height, added some additional articulation to the front elevation, removed the full chimney, stepped in the outside wall on the south side by 16 inches and reduced the proposed net square footage by 215 square feet. Public Works has reviewed the turning diagrams and as demonstrated in those diagrams agrees that the driveway can function with the size car proposed in the diagram. They did not evaluate it for backing out because there is a turnaround location at the top of the driveway that they expect will be used by cars on the driveway. They didn't evaluate it for cars that may have to back down. So staff recommends the commission here from the applicant, consider the design amendments and determine if the modifications are sufficient to approve the project. If they are determined to be sufficient, staff has provided you with findings and conditions of approval for your consideration.
Thank you, Kristin. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Okay, not hearing any. Do we, the applicant or their architect like to comment? I think David Hollander had his hand up earlier, so I'm guessing, like.
Okay, this is Stu Summers, can you hear me?
Did you approve him to talk? I didn't.
Somebody, somebody pumped me up there. So, so I would actually, I would like to start with the David and Sheila Hollander would love to just briefly address the commission and then I can get into the details.
Yeah, can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm David Hollander.
I'm Sheila Hollander.
And I'm Claire Hollander.
And my daughter Jacqueline's on Zoom as well. So, good evening. As you know, you know, we've, we've fallen in love with Larkspur, been here for several years now. Have embedded ourselves in the community. We love the location of the home. All our neighbors have been incredible. We even open office right here on Magnolia, so we're just right down the street and we really want to create a home that we can all live in at 24 Laurel. Again, thank you for hearing this again tonight. As you may recall, we were here on June 14, as was stated. And I know we have a new member, so thank you for, for hearing this. As most of you remember, it's been a pretty long road for us to get to this point. We started back in February of 21 when we first bought the house. And as you may further recall, having been to the site, it's safe to say that it just does not fit in with, with a community that's around the Laurel Loop. As everyone in the neighborhood has expressed at the June hearing and have continually let us know that they all support our design and particularly the revisions that we've made, which I just want to say, we heard you loud and clear last time. The concerns which were, which were addressed were the driveway, the functionality of that driveway. We do have Stu to talk about that tonight and there is our expert on call to further talk about that if it needs to get into that. We made articulations on all sides of the, of the property, including the top story. We reduced the mass as you had requested, the FAR reduction, as you heard. Importantly, we love that tree, that heritage redwood tree. And our expert Zach is available right now to talk to you about what we're going to do to save that tree. And Stu will address the specifics, which I'm not really qualified to do. But at this point in our journey, we want to emphasize we love the community, this, this home, and we really want to make it something that everybody is proud of in the neighborhood. And to get the cars off the road, it's, it's super important to us to do that. So again, we think we heard you, we think we were there and we really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I think David Hollander has his hand up to the applicant.
Um, that was him.
Oh, you all want in the same place.
Oh, okay. So it's my understanding I can share a PowerPoint tonight if I can share my screen.
Kristin, can you arrange that? Kristen, you're mute.
All right, she's got it.
She's got it, okay.
And let me see.
Elise is the co-host. She's going to be helping me tonight.
Okay, can everybody see that slide?
I can, yes.
Okay, excellent. So, hey, um, thank you guys so much for, you know, coming back here and hearing this again. I know you're volunteers and I know you, you know, it takes a lot of time and energy. I've been doing this in another town as in San Rafael for 16 years. So I totally get it. And I know you got pretty full agenda later. So I'm hoping to keep this to the response to the comments we believe we heard loud and clear last time. And, you know, with one exception, we do have a new commissioner and I'm hoping he was brought up to speed. And if he has any specific questions, I'm certainly willing to delve deeper. So, you know, we left the last meeting pretty encouraged that we could attack these comments in a manner that we heard from you guys and, and we think we've done so. Commissioner Wagstaff that night kind of pointed out clearly, you know, being an architect, he's smart enough to know that it's not so easy sometimes to go and revise a design to meet all these comments without, you know, going back to the drawing board. And, you know, he did caution that some, some of the comments aren't exactly easy to address, but, but I think we did so. And I think, I think the process really worked too. You know, when I stepped back and looked at what we did at the end, I feel like we, we ended up with a better building, which to me shows that this process actually works. So, so that's just kind of my overarching comments. We feel we've brought the FAR down, made massing changes and just articulated the building a bit more. So specifically, that rendering you're looking at, we actually took a harder look at the landscape plan that's being proposed and, and put the right species in the right places with, you know, what is going to be their, you know, more mature heights. Our landscape architect is likely on call here as well. He wants, if someone wants to answer how long, but we're planting nine new trees. Yes, a majority of the trees on this site are being taken out, but one must remember that we have three or four black acacias, which are basically invasive horrible weeds that should go. One is being taken out from a fire hazard that even the fire department wants out of there. And the one kind of prize, the, the big redwood we're all talking about, we want to keep it too. So we did talk to Zach and we're willing to go through whatever measures we need to. Let's keep in mind, the revision we just made is taking the footprint that's near the tree now and moving it about 16 inches further away from the tree and not any deeper because we're not excavating in that area for the garage. So we're actually pulling the foundation further away. In terms of trenching or things for drainage, certainly items we can technically work around and we can maybe ask Zach about that. But we're going to go through every measure possible to preserve that tree and the owners want to preserve that tree. So I just want to make that crystal clear. Kristin and I did talk about that landing. That landing is about at grade. So we'll talk to Zach further and if I need to tweak that landing, if that's something we can do, you know, as a condition of approval, I have no problem doing that. So that's, that's an easy move if it's gonna, if it's gonna have a benefit. So on to the next slide, just to kind of rehash where we're at. You've all been to the site. Where's my PowerPoint? Thank you. All right. Bear with me a moment. It's probably why you guys don't have everybody's share screens. Next slide, I'm just a reminder of what's there. I mean, everyone in the neighborhood has been telling everyone for years that, you know, this place is kind of at the end of its useful life and kind of an eyesore, bad access problems, bad parking problems, not much good to say about this mass that's out there. So I think it's unanimously agreed upon by anybody, everybody in the neighborhood that something needs to happen here. With respect to the driveway, this is the, this is the document that was produced by, by Dan Hughes, who's online. If you guys have further questions about this when I'm at the end of this. This was pre-vetted out by Alvin, your public works engineer. This was sent directly to him and he responded. I think you have an email in your packet. Essentially says he, that he's done with the issue and he feels it meets the standard. In terms of backing out, yeah, we, no one plans to back out of this driveway. The, the Hollanders don't want to back out of this driveway. So I'm certain they're going to instruct any of their friends or guests to come up there to not block the ability to have a car turn around. So in the rare event there's a party, I'm hoping and that's such a tight neighborhood like this, they're going to talk to all their neighbors and figure out where people can park. Just back to the renderings and I do promise this is short and sweet. I only have a couple more slides. We pulled the front elevation in, shoot, I wish this slide showed it. We pulled the front elevation in over here about 30 inches of the upper elevation in this one, 30 inches, the other one about 16 or 18 inches, plus the removal of the two story chimney, which essentially reduced that mass up there from where it was about four foot nine, lowered the entire building a foot on average by lowering the main floor plate and several of the upper floor plates and playing with the roof pitches. Also took the center portion of the house and brought it down where the stair tower was in order to break the mass up into two more distinctive masses. So the move here was to, to break the sort of perceived monolithic mass up even more. So that's what we did there. Just a kind of a comment about, you know, one of the things, the takeaways is the massive amount of other development in this neighborhood is a little startling when it comes, when we compare it. I know other people have larger sites which afford them larger floor areas, but you know, this one a block away. It's not, you know, only large, but it's right in your face. I mean, you're, you drive up the street and you're staring at 20 feet of construction, like right on the street, right at you. And I just wanted to make a point that, you know, ours is stepped way back off the street. So the experience as you're driving right to left on this is, you know, a low retaining wall. Hopefully a lot of greenery, which is what we are hoping softens this entire structure and site as well. And then that's it, you know, and I think in comparison to what's been going on around us, I don't find it unreasonable. And then more to that point, right in the middle of your screen there is our site and the footprint of our site and the intensity of development on this site comparable with the rest of the loop. To me, at least if you look at this, is, is much smaller in terms of site impact than what I see all around us. I mean, we have the new driveway, yes, but the footprint we're creating is essentially the same footprint of the existing house. And the increase in any concrete or any disturbance of the site is literally to have the driveway get to the site. A little backstory, if you guys don't remember, is the, before the Hollanders acquired the little strip in front of them, we were putting the library from the town of Larkspur recently, part of the existing house actually resides on the city's property. So we had a non-conforming encroaching structure on the city property. So, you know, this project is also cleaning that situation up, of course. You might remember that last meeting, we pretty much had the support of every single neighbor on the loop who spoke. I believe some of them will be here tonight, but just a reminder, if you recall that meeting, I don't know if ever, ever heard that sort of support in any public meeting I proposed or been in. So that was, you know, pretty refreshing. And we have a solution now. That's a good one. And we, we really believe we've solved your remaining concerns. And that's pretty much me sticking to responding to your comments. Certainly open to any questions now or if you have questions of our team.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Do we have any questions for the architect or the applicant?
I had actually a quick question. So in looking at your car turning radius, which is a Prius and a Toyota Corolla?
Yes.
Pretty small cars, but is this part, I'm, I don't know if you can see the arrow I'm pointing, but is that part of your neighbors across the streets property or is that street right of way or?
I can let Dan chime in, but if Dan Hughes is on, if someone can promote him to speak. But it is the right of way. It's not the, it's not, it's not private property.
So somebody parks there, though.
Well, it's, it's a driveway apron. So presumably, no one would park there, but I understand the question.
It's my, really, my big concern is that I think you're gonna, I'm guessing you're going to have to make a bigger cut than you're planning there, but if the city engineer says it works, I guess I could be convinced.
So can everybody hear me? This is Dan Hughes with DVC Group, the civil engineer.
Yeah.
So a couple of things on, on that. Yes, you, you see there that dash line that looks like a minor bulb out, if you will. That is all asphalt. It's all part of the road. It is the front of the driveway of the home that is directly across the street. But the concrete for their driveway starts at where the edge of that dash is. So on those radius curves there that we have that starts the turning movement, that is not on the concrete driveway of the neighbor home. That is all within public right of way. It's all paved area that would be a parking space if it wasn't right in front of a driveway of another home. So that home, people can park in their driveway and that area would be clear. Now, if somebody parallel parks in that location, what they would be doing is blocking off that driveway. So highly doubtful. I don't often drive around and see people parallel parking in front of a driveway to block it off, but theoretically, I suppose that could happen. I have the street view up on my computer screen. If you do a Google street view, you can see it. You can see the asphalt cut out there that we're showing there to be used. Regarding Public Works, we did present this to Public Works, Alvin and Public Works. His response was, you know, and I quote, "This is not a Public Works concern." He noted that if the driveway is used, how it's designed, then cars wouldn't need to back down the driveway. So Alvin reviewed our design and supports the design and does not have an issue with it. And this, to clarify, that's, it is a Prius is one of the cars. The other car is a Toyota Camry, which is a midsize car like a Honda Accord, Ford Taurus or other car like that. Those were the cars that we showed using on here. We follow Marin County standards and we actually, Marin County just states you have to show an automobile. We showed two types of cars here that can maneuver in and out of there.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Actually, I have a question for actually to Kristen and Elise here. For some reason, this driveway doesn't work exactly as the applicant is planning to, and they can't get in and out that easily. The impact is really in just the homeowner, right? They're kind of, they're the ones that are going to be stuck with this. There's no impact on the city or anyone else. Am I correct in that sort of, am I correct in my thinking that?
Well, you, you have to consider that if it doesn't function, they won't be providing the onsite parking they're attempting to provide. But other, and again, that is an impact on them. And the alternative could be their attempts to get into the driveway will impact the roadway as they make the maneuver in, you know, in, in more, they have to make more maneuvers to get in.
Okay, right. So they'll just have to do lots of turns. Got it. Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Do we have any comments from the public? Just reminding everyone to keep their comments to three minutes. I see a lot of hands up, Chris, Elise and Kristen.
Sorry. My screen keeps changing around on me because we have two, two people here. I've lost my screen that shows me the hands.
While, while you get that back.
I can, I don't, I can call on people if you'd like. Yeah. How about Jeff Jennings? You're at the top of my list. I'm going to let you speak.
Okay, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. Well, this is Jeff Jennings and my wife Alexandra Jennings.
Hi.
So we are, and forgive us, we are in San Francisco, but we felt it so compelling to be a part of this that we wanted to make our comments and just express how much we love this neighborhood. How much, having lived here since 2015, we understand that the importance for getting parking off all of the streets, whether it's Palm or all these areas up there, is so critically important. I think we all forget that people tend to just drive fast around some of these turns in these areas up here. And I think it's incredibly thoughtful that they've done everything they can to make a very well thought out design and a plan for doing this. I think David Turner's house, just to, just next to theirs, did a miraculous job of creating a beautiful entry to their place, a beautiful entity in and of itself. And I think that what they're proposing is both, I mean, I don't want to over, you know, sugarcoat it, but it's literally like an elegant design and it's going to, I think, do a lot for that property. We walk around all the time in this neighborhood. I mountain bike around these streets all the time. And that area to the left, where you often have too many cars parked, I just think it would be a great idea to get as many of those cars off the side of the street as we possibly could have. And I know my wife has some comments here as well, too.
So I, I wanted to clarify, we're, we're in San Francisco at the Chase Center, but we are longtime Larkspur residents from 2007. So we're here for a concert.
We, we are critically making.
Yeah, we don't live in San Francisco.
We're importantly trying to make it a point to be here as part of this.
We wanted to give our support 100% to the Hollanders project. It's through multiple revisions. It's been a long journey for them. We walk our dogs in that street, our kids walk on that street, eliminating the need for street parking by building a garage. We would be so thrilled. And not only that, but the house is sort of an eyesore and I think it will make that loop really beautiful and more in line with. Um, and not only that, but the house is sort of an eyesore, and I think it will make that loop really beautiful and more in line with their neighbors' houses. Um, and I think that they have put a lot of thoughtfulness into the landscaping and the greenery in front. And it will be a really beautiful project if it comes to fruition. So um, we would be thrilled. We hope that everyone else is too. So thank you for listening to us and um best of luck to the Hollanders.
Thank you very much for the comments. Um, I just want to remind uh anyone else commenting, just to limit your comments to three minutes. If you can, please.
I'm gonna call on David Turner.
Hi, this is David Turner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so we're neighbors, my wife Ellen and I at thirty-four Laurel. We're probably um, one of the most impacted because we're direct neighbors. Um, I'll keep it brief. Uh, we have um consistently supported this project through the various stages. Um, the fundamentals to us are just right. Uh, this is basically a problem for the neighborhood that the Hollanders are uh prepared to make a big investment to fix. And so from a neighborhood perspective, um, I think that's why you're seeing such unanimous support. This is a difficult site. They're trying to do a difficult thing, um, as, as demonstrated by the discussion around the driveway. Um, I think they've come up with a good solution. I think they're gonna build a very attractive house. And fundamentally, they're gonna move traffic off the street and, and building that driveway, we, we did a similar project ourselves. It's extremely expensive. It's technically challenging, and it's kind of a gift to the neighborhood because the cars aren't littering the loop anymore. So if somebody's prepared to come in and do that, uh, we support it. And the, the bonus for us is that it's a very attractive house where currently there's a very ugly one. Um, and I think they've really addressed your comments from last time, reduced massing. Um, we're very pleased to see that they're uh, trying to retain that big redwood and planting some new trees. It does take time for a site to recover from a project like this, but again, in our experience, if you do it right, the site can really recover and uh, nature can take back over and I, I envision this, 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 envision this.
Yeah, I think we lost him.
Something happened to his audio, so.
Yeah.
Um, speaker with the phone, last four digits, one, four, zero, two. I'm gonna let you speak. That's nine, two, four, one, four.
It's James.
James Holmes, Larkspur. Um, I think it would by and large, the, the uh project is good, but um I think it would not be unreasonable to bring down the plate height to nine feet in order to reduce the bulk and mass. Uh, nine feet uh ceilings seem ample on a, a ridge top site. Uh, the, the driveway turning radius analysis seems unrealistic because it assumes that drivers won't back down, and it only considers smaller cars and not SUVs. I live near two hillside driveways, right next to one with turnabouts at the top, and people still back down all the time. And SUVs are very common, if not the majority of vehicles these days. It seems to me a sound analysis should consider the most uh reasonably probable scenarios, not just the um most uh conservative ones. Um, I wonder why the Douglas fir has to be cut down if uh it, it does not have to be cut down to accommodate the house, and I, I think it should be retained. And um, I also certainly think every effort should be made to retain the redwood tree. Uh, redwoods can be comparatively tolerant of uh nearby building. Uh, you can see in, in the canyon, there are often uh, uh, redwoods quite near the homes and six feet seems really uh ample clearance. So uh, I would certainly, you can always, if, if something happens in the future, the redwood can always be taken down, but once taken down, it can be put back. Thank you.
Jay Greenberg, I'm gonna allow you to talk.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So just like I said last time, I completely support this project. Uh, I appreciate the changes, especially the entryway, which I just saw, which uh I think that looks really nice rather than one big mass across. I think that was a nice change. Um, completely agree with the currently this is an eyesore. I'm not sure when its useful life ever was to the prior comment. I walk by that house four times a day and I try not to look at it. Um, very, very supportive of the new uh build. It increases the value of everybody's house in the neighborhood. Um, and you know, we have a lot of really nice houses, especially selling. Uh, I just saw one closed a block over for an ungodly amount. Um, so every little bit helps. Uh, the Hollanders seem to be very conscientious, and for three years I'd been living next door to seventy-four Hazel, which has got to be the worst project in my twenty-five years of building in Marin that I've ever experienced. So uh, you know, having tolerated something that's so inconsiderate and unattractive, um, I'm really happy to see something that I think will be beneficial and uh by some considerate people. And then, of course, the off-street parking uh is really, really the main thing right there. The way the cars have to park for their house right now makes it hard when you're walking your dog down the street. It really is gonna be beneficial to have a garage and that off-street parking. And uh, lastly, you know, I think uh I've worked with Zach before, uh, redwood trees, and I'm sure he'll put a, a, you know, a tree protection plan in place that allows them to save that redwood, which I think is great. Thank you.
Jay Holland, I'm gonna allow you to speak.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi. Uh, I don't live next to the Hollanders, but I work next to the Hollanders. Their business is right next door to ours in downtown Larkspur. And uh, when I met the family, it was clear these were conscientious folks that, you know, were committed to the neighborhood. Uh, they, like us, live here and work here. And uh, you know, aside from the value, the aesthetic value that they'll add with this new development in the neighborhood and the increased ease of parking and walking, we walk our dogs in the neighborhood. Uh, uh, what these folks represent to us, my wife and our two daughters, is the advancement of Larkspur in its new phase. Folks that not just own a home here or live here, but they also work here. And uh, I, I just love their passion. When they talk about their project, uh, both their business and their residents, it's uh equally enthusiastic. And uh, you know, they've got two daughters, we've got two daughters. I mean, it's, it's um, uh, there's a kinship there and a relationship that's familial in a small community like this that I think is really representative of what we want to build here in Larkspur. Uh, it's kind of a new phase. I first moved to Larkspur in nineteen eighty-three, and I worked in San Francisco. I left in the morning at six and I got back at eight. Uh, and, and that didn't make me really part of the community. So to see these folks be as diligent and thoughtful and caring about their community and their home is, you know, to me, what represents what the new Larkspur is. So uh, uh, again, I don't live up in the neighborhood, but my wife and I walk our dogs up there. And we see, at least through the plans and the discussions we've had, how uh, their plans would seem to be a benefit to, you know, any uh restriction or, 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 or challenges that are being faced up there in that regard. So our vote, our families' vote is for the Hollanders.
Lawrence, you'll, you're allowed to talk. Lawrence? I'm gonna try someone else. Um, Miles.
Here, I'm here.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry, I didn't unmute it. Yeah, as I was saying, my wife and, my wife and I, we live in Riviera Circle. My wife is Helen. But we walk in that neighborhood with our dog quite often. We pass that house, which is really a nice sore. The people that have spoken before have said most of what I think, and uh they, they have I think that the Hollanders have really tried to fit in what the uh planning commission required of them. Excuse me. The parking, the parking is a nothing problem up there. When we walk with the dog, we end up walking almost in the middle of the street, and there's quite a lot of traffic on that there with all the construction that's going on, and it's quite dangerous. They have articulated their building, they've cut down the footage. They have reduced the FAR, the massing. I think this uh building should be passed as is. I was very surprised it wasn't passed at the last meeting because of the support of all the neighbors. Uh, I did my project three years ago in Riviera Circle. I had two neighbors against it, but the planning commission gave us the green light. And we are now living here. We're quite happy. So I vote that you pass this as is. Thank you.
Miles DeBor? Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
Yes, nailed it. Run ahead. Um, can you hear me? Actually, double check. Okay, cool, great. Um, hey, my name's Miles DeBor, um, and I'm a resident of Larkspur. Just thought I'd add in my, my two cents tonight. Um, so I regularly walk the, the Laurel Loop, um, and I've often seen traffic backed up in front of the twenty-four Laurel area as well as cars having to park on the left edge of the street, which is on the side of the mountain there. Uh, the current situation, I think, is a bit unsafe for both pedestrians and vehicles. I would, um, I would hope to see this issue um resolved, um, especially with the addition of a driveway and garage as the Hollanders are proposing. In my opinion, I, I think that would stand for a safer alternative than the current parking situation now. Uh, furthermore, the house as it now does, as it is now, does not complement the beautiful aesthetic of the loop. The proposed design is much more attractive and in keeping with the surrounding homes. Uh, that all being said, I uh, I do strongly support the approval of this application. Thank you.
Bill Hagerty, should be able to unmute?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Uh, we like a lot of the neighbors. Welcome the Hollanders to our neighborhood. We agree that that current house is an eyesore and that the current plan is, it's a much more uh elegant design. We totally support the need for a driveway and a garage. Uh, it sounds like there may be some still issues on the access on the driveway, but I guess that's being addressed. Uh, I think at the last meeting, we were concerned about the size of the property. It looks like most of the commissioners were. Uh, it looks like there are some modest changes, so I guess that's, that'll be decided tonight whether they're sufficient or not. Uh, we remain concerned about the trees. We're, we're very glad to see that number fifteen redwood is now uh, a stronger attempt to preserve it. But as Kristen said, the, the amount of construction and the closeness to the property and design could have a substantial impact on, on number fifteen redwood and number ten redwood. And the other thing is the uh Douglas fir. If you go online, you can see language that old Douglas firs are very fire resistant due to their largely productive, productive, protective bark that develops with age. Uh, Douglas fir is one of the most fire-resistant and adaptive conifers in the world. And there's a number of articles like that. So I have, I'm not, I'm very surprised that it's being taken down for fire impact. When, if you look online, they're not considered very flammable uh trees. So I, if you take the Douglas fir and the redwoods, they're now the three largest trees on the hill. I think you'll have a substantial uh significant visual impact if those trees are taken down on the beauty of the hill, which we've lived on since nineteen ninety-two.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see any other hands raised.
Great. Well, thank you very much to everyone who commented uh tonight. Um, I think we, it's time now to close the uh public hearing portion of this meeting and um bring it back to the commissioner for their deliberations.
Um, can I ask, can you see my screen still? Am I still sharing?
No. No, all we see are the, the attendees.
Okay.
So if you, can you, are you able to share the agenda again?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You see it now?
We see it now. Yes, we see it now.
This is the plans.
Kristen, can you um, uh, is it, can you show, pull up the tree diagram and show where this Douglas fir is?
This tree right here. Uh, you see my cursor?
Yeah. So Commissioner Mike Staff, why don't we have you go first with your comments?
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, I, I still, as you know, have concerns about the driveway, but I think they've done a lot to, to make it work and um you know, it's, it's a neighborhood where other people are dealing with similar things. Um, and uh with the support of the neighbors who, who understand what it takes parking-wise, the parking up there's always been kind of iffy because I walk that street all the time, too. Um, and I think, uh, so I think they'll go ahead and, and uh, and it should, it should work for smaller vehicles. Um, and I really like what they've done with the house. Um, I actually liked the house before, too, but I think it's, it's a better um, it's a better floor plan and, and a better elevation. So um, having said all that, I, I can certainly support the project. I would like them to try to save the Douglas fir if the arborist says it's savable. That's, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Swisher?
Uh, I'll echo um uh, what's already been said, and I um mostly, I really think that when you have uh such neighborhood support as you have in this property, that you really need to respect the people who are living there uh, and the goodwill uh they are showing toward this, because you know, we don't always see that. Um, and I think that they put a lot of work into this, as I said before, on this project. I think it's attractive. It's obviously a zillion times better than what is existing. Uh, and the driveway is keeping some cars off the street, whether they're SUVs or whether they're, you know, Priuses or Fiat five hundreds. I don't think it matters that much. I think people just have to be careful if they do choose to back out of this property. Uh, and I echo with, with Brock said that if they can do their best to uh preserve as much of the trees as they can, that's gonna be in their interest as well. Not just in the community's interest, but because the trees are what makes Larkspur special. Um, so I'm, I'm in support of this project.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Campbell, would you like to share your comments?
Sure. Uh, I, I'm glad to see the support of the, the neighborhood. Uh, that's, that's always good to see. Um, I'm, I'm pretty much in, in line with uh Brock and Jeffrey. Um, I, I guess I'm a little bit concerned about the turning radius of, of a larger car, but um, like we've kind of talked about here, that's gonna be, um, you know, it comes with the support of the neighbors and, and the off-street parking that that does provide for smaller cars. And uh, I, I would like to see some of those trees saved, uh, but uh, I trust that the the um, the owners will do what they can to save those, because like has been said, it's in their interest as well.
Thank you. Um, and from my perspective, I actually don't have anything to add. I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think in the last meeting, we were able to make the findings for a number of the uh, the permits that they applied for, and I think we can make the findings here for the balance of the um, the permits they're requesting. And again, comments on the trees, I echo um driveway. And yeah, lastly, I was very impressed by the number of, of community members that came out to speak today um, and appreciated all their comments. So thank you for that. So can we have someone?
Natasha, I did have one question for Kristen, and if we could go to the main floor plan.
I have a question for you all as well before you make a motion.
Um, this door appeared in this particular iteration, because I kept both sets of plans. Um, and uh, so the accessory dwelling unit, which had a separate entrance and still does, um, is now accessible from the main entry of the house. I assume that's okay in terms of accessory dwelling deductions for floor area. Um, and as I said, this is more a question for the uh planning staff than, than any of the rest of you.
There's nothing written into the code that would prohibit an interior connection in, in an attached ADU. It just requires specific. It just requires specifically to have an exterior doorway. Having said that, we have talked to the city attorney who has indicated that if the commission is ever concerned about the accessory dwelling unit being used in a different manner and wants the connection not allowed, you can do that as a condition of approval.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was surprised, uh, when I saw it the last meeting because it was walled and main living space doesn't have a bathroom unless you go out on the deck and come into the accessory dwelling unit. So, uh,
Do we want to have the applicant comment on why they added a door there?
Sure, if they're, if they're still here, um, I mean, I know.
Yeah.
Hey there, Brock. It was actually your suggestion to some, some, uh, degree at the last meeting, so it's, it's, it's funny. Um, your point about the inconvenience of a bathroom, while we do have an elevator in the house, so that sort of, uh, alleviated it being terribly inconvenient, but when you mentioned it, I said, okay, well, you know, I've done many, uh, attached ADUs, probably a dozen of them, where we have had an interior, um, uh, access as an option, you know, maybe it's a, you know, maybe it's a rented ADU, maybe it's the, the young family getting started who's, um, you know, a, um, uh, one of their children, elderly person caregiver, I don't think, um, ADUs have a lot of different ways people are using them, so I guess that's the best answer I could give, and, and when you suggested it, I was, you know, thought it was a good idea.
I, I, I tend to agree with you. I just didn't know, uh, because we're dealing with these all the time now and a lot of them are basically just additional square footage and, and this is a, a beautiful family room potential and that's okay by me, but, uh, I didn't know whether there were some rules relative to ADUs that I didn't know about.
Yeah, there's nothing I've ever encountered that prohibits it. Um, you know, the caregiver was one that's been striking my mind in the last couple of years, just simply because that's happening. You know, people, I mean, the Hollanders are gonna move into this house, they're my age, they're in their mid-fifties, they're gonna spend the rest of their lives here. So it's not implausible that a caregiver, you know, ends up living in ADUs for people and helping out. I just think our society's kind of changing, but that's just social commentary, I suppose.
Yeah, I may need one of those caregivers myself, who knows?
There you go. Keep climbing.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you. And then Kristen, you had a question.
Um, you, you, three of you have mentioned the trees and I'm a little unclear if that means you would like me to do anything regarding trees or not. For instance, if you want the fur preserved, it's in good shape. It doesn't have to go, it's being removed for quote fire concerns. So if you want it preserved, you need to specify and impose a condition so we can make sure it's not cut down. Otherwise, it's really the applicant's purview if you simply say, we hope they save the trees. That's all.
I'm going to defer to my commissioners if, uh, any one of them or all of them would prefer to have that as a condition of approval.
I, I don't, I, I personally wouldn't prefer to have those conditions. I think it really is up to the arborist, the applicant, the architect and, uh, uh, the common sense. Again, it's in their interest to try to preserve trees. Um, and, uh, you know, we do live in a fire area and I understand the art, the, uh, one commenter that Doug Furs are fire resistant, they're resistant, they don't necessarily stop. And they could lead to, you know, ignition on your roof, et cetera. So I, I, I wouldn't make that a condition.
I actually agree with Jeffrey.
Oh, boy.
Um, okay, great. So would anyone like to make a motion?
Rock?
Um, okay. I will, uh, move approval of, uh, design review, uh, twenty-one fifty, twenty-four Laurel Avenue. Uh, floor area ratio exception slope use permit variance to, uh, permit three onsite parking spaces, variance to permit driveway paving, including turf block and heritage tree removal.
Second it.
Thank you, and, um, wait, what's the terminology here? Everyone who agrees, please say yes.
Yes, I think you need to take a roll call, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we'll take a roll call, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Kristen, you want to take a roll call?
I, yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
I.
Commissioner Campbell?
I.
Chair Chalmers?
I.
And Chair Williams is absent. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Great. That's it. So thank you very much. Um, we can move on to now, uh, the second public hearing item.
Uh, would you like me to bring the plans up or I would, I would think you would, so?
Yes, please. This is for ten Walnut Avenue. Design review F A R. What is the number of items here? Floor area ratio height exception vary, four variances and a slope use permit. So once you're ready, uh, Kristen, can we please have the staff report?
You certainly may. So the applicants requesting permits to substantially demolish, remodel and construct new additions to an existing multi-story, non-conforming single-family residence. Work includes legalizing and expanding the lower level accessory dwelling unit and demolishing the open car deck and constructing a detached enclosed garage and, uh, a single car carport on the side and under story gym and spa below. The permits include design review and F A R, uh, exception permit to expand the four thousand and eighty-two square foot residence to five thousand two hundred and sixty-five square feet with a point three one F A R. A height exception permit to allow demo and remodeling and additions that exceed sixty percent of the value while retaining the existing non-conforming forty-two foot height of this existing multi-story residence. A variance to the height limit to add new additions in excess of the thirty-two, thirty-foot height limit. A variance to construct an addition that would expand an existing two-bedroom second unit totaling a thousand nine ninety-nine square feet to one thousand one hundred and seventy-one square feet, where code limits ADUs with two bedrooms to one thousand square feet. A variance to the fifteen-foot height limit for an accessory structure, the garage in particular, that will measure approximately twenty-six feet eight inches, where code limits it to fifteen feet in height. And a slope use per, oh, a variance to the twenty-foot front yard setback for the garage structure because of the improvements below. Um, only garages are exempted from the twenty-foot front yard setback. And a slope use permit to, um, permit approximately sixty plus cubic yards of grading and a fence height exception for the fence in the front yard. Um, located out here in the Walnut Avenue right away and then crossing back into the property. Uh, staff has provided a detailed description of each permit and why it's required in the staff report, so I'm not going to go into all that. If you have any questions regarding the information I provided, I'd be happy to answer your questions. So the subject site is a downhill lot on a one-way avenue street, um, known as Walnut Avenue. It's narrow and it's on the southerly border of the historic Loop neighborhood. The lot runs street to street with frontages both on Walnut Avenue and Madrone Avenue below. As rec, as recorded, the roadway is actually much wider than the improved portion of the road. So in March of nine twenty nineteen, the council did approve a request for abandonment of over six thousand square feet of unimproved right-of-way to ten Walnut Avenue. The abandonment request intended to resolve existing encroachments of the single-family home um, in the right-of-way, which is not unusual along this particular roadway. A follow-up application merged the abandoned right-of-way into the lot, resulting in a total seventeen thousand six hundred and six square foot parcel with an average grade of forty-five percent. Uh, as designed, the existing residence is centrally located on the lot and the proposed main residence and unit below would meet the minimum setbacks, the lot coverage, um, and the natural state requirements. Uh, on the onsite driveway and carport is designed to provide the four onsite parking spaces, two in the garage, one in the carport, one parallel in front of the garage spaces because guest parking is permitted to block required parking spaces. The applicant will probably note that they have improved the shoulder some and it's, you can see there's room for two additional parking spaces partly on their property and partly in the roadway shoulder as well. Generally, staff finds the proposed design to be attractive and really well-considered. The remodel will unify previous modifications and additions in the structure in a more cohesive manner, allowing the residents to better complement the neighborhood and will on, along Walnut Avenue and the subject site. The darker color scheme appears really appropriate in this setting because it will reduce the immediate visibility of the structure when looked up fat from Madrone Avenue. The subject site is steeply sloped. The structure has been developed such that the upper floors, uh, I think I may have skipped a page. Sorry about that. Nope. Um, it's, um, been, um, it's deeply sloping and the existing structure has been developed such that only the upper floors can be viewed from Walnut Avenue, including the garage and carport. And this would be compatible with existing development along this roadway and really appropriate. Um, as discussed in the report, due to the location, the existing improvements and the steep terrain, staff is generally supportive of the range of requested permits, including the height and setback variances for the proposed detached accessory structure that encompasses the garage and the gym. The height exception permit for the main residence, most of the additions, legalization of the ADU in the existing space, requested slope use permit and the fence height exceptions. However, we are having difficulty supporting the proposed F A R's exception permit in combination with several of the requested variances to the height limit. The number of variance requests for this application could be precedent-setting. Um, in particular, the variance to further exceed the floor area limit to expand the existing ADU. Uh, where code limits bedrooms, a two-bedroom unit to a thousand square feet. Um, staff has not identified really a physical hardship that justifies going beyond the thousand square foot limit. It's clear that based on the existing terrain, it created the floor space that they needed to not only accommodate an ADU, but one that's slightly larger than already permitted. So it, as far as we can determine, the, the development for the ADU is pretty much a a, a, a design-specific variance generated by the desires of the applicant property owner and not so much by the terrain or some other hardship that supports a variance. In addition, the proposed addition at the steepest portion of the lot and in the most physical location, visible location does not meet the findings for approval of an F A R exception permit, which has findings that require that the mass and bulk be moderated and not necessarily exacerbated with visibility and very, um, vertical design. Staffs also had difficulty making supportive findings for the requested variance to the height limit to add new additions to the residence on the lower level downhill portion of the property right in this area. It would result in a three-story addition with a rooftop deck on the steepest and most visible portion of the home when viewed from Madrone Avenue. Uh, the expansions would measure up to thirty-four feet high for the new kitchen. Um, expansion, uh, at the southeast corner, the dining room addition and deck would measure thirty-eight feet height above grade where thirty feet is the limit permitted by code. As demonstrated by other additions on the plan, it is possible to propose additions to expand outward and less off the rear end that would comply with the height limit or better comply. Um, it's noted the floor plan is being completely reconfigured and it is the applicant's for, floor design choices that have necessitated some of the height variance requests. The vertical unrelied design of the addition in the thirty-eight foot height does not meet finding C bulk under design review or finding one required for approval of an F A R exception permit. In addition, plans include the addition of a shed-style dormer over the master bedroom to create a fourteen to fifteen-foot, um, vaulted ceiling with an outside plate height on the side that has an eleven-foot height. We have supported other dormers on non-conforming structures to meet, to be able to meet minimums or even more comfortable um, ceiling height, um, provisions. However, it's a little harder to support a, an eleven-foot outside plate height in a fifteen-foot vaulted ceiling. When it comes to thirty-four feet, five inches in height, um, the physical hardship doesn't really support that sort of a personal design choice. It's really meant to try and provide somebody with the minimum and reasonable development. So we've recommended that the applicant or the property, the commission consider lowering the dormer height to give them more of a minimal uh, in standard plate height on the outside and reduce that height variance. Lastly, as discussed in the staff report, um, all of the variances are tied directly to the F A R exception permit as well. And to support the proposal, it must be demonstrated that the design includes mass-reducing techniques as required in the uh, F A R exception findings. However, the variances to the height limit at the most visible locations are sort of contrary to that desire. And they exacerbate the massing instead of minimizing the appearance. Um, so based on the, the above discussion, staff recommends in general that the commission not approve the variance to expand the ADU, that you provide direction to the applicant to modify the design to remove the height variance request on the south side and southeastern corner and east side where red, where, where the improvements are readily viewable above Madrone Avenue. To proceed, the commission, we recommend you hear from the applicant, consider any testimony from any interested persons uh, in all the findings that are required to approve this project as proposed and provide the applicant and staff with direction.
That concludes my report. Thank you very much, Kristen. Um, do any commissioners have questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions. And, and I, we talked about this a little bit, but, um, are you not allowed a thousand square feet, uh, for an ADU? That does not count in your F A R.
No.
What is it?
Eight hundred square feet when it does not exceed sixteen feet in height and it has four foot side and rear setbacks.
So how, what is the height of the ceiling in the ADU area? Cause I can't read that number.
You mean on the sections?
Yeah. It's too teeny-weeny and I couldn't find my magnifying glass. A four point one.
Oh. Okay. I don't think it's excessive. It's, it's space that's already there. They just want to expand it out further. Here it is right here.
So, um, can you read that?
Well, they're not giving me a specific dimension there.
No, I didn't. I couldn't find what eleven.
It's eleven feet to the top of the floor of the main level. So it's probably nine feet, not a little more.
Ten feet maybe. Um, five, five, looks like, yeah, maybe not quite ten feet. So my question is, um, if they made, uh, some of that storage and the ADU then was a thousand square feet, would it be deductible from the overall square footage?
No.
Why not?
Because the criteria for being exempted from lot coverage and floor area are very specific. The only thing that can be deducted is an ADU up to eight hundred square feet that does not exceed sixteen feet in height.
Right.
And has the setbacks required. This particular unit exceeds the sixteen-foot height limit, first off.
Why is that? It says ten feet or nine.
That's the plate height. It's sixteen feet measured from grade to the top of the roof of the building.
So why was the ADU in the last one allowable?
Because the, from grade to the top of the ceiling of that ADU, it did not exceed sixteen feet in height. It's not that it wasn't, that isn't, that this isn't allowable. It is allowable. It's just not deducted from the floor area. And the maximum floor area we have written into our code for a two-unit, two-bedroom unit is a thousand square feet.
Right. Okay, well I'm.
It's permitted and supported. We have absolutely no objection to legalizing the ADU and maintaining it. We're simply stating that there aren't findings for a variance to exceed the permitted floor area further and add on to it.
I, I guess, I, I'm just, you know, if, if you turn that into storage and you took out the square footage, so you got down to eight hundred square feet or a thousand square feet, whatever the number is, does it then count?
No, because it exceeds the sixteen-foot height limit.
From where?
On the, uh, far southeast corner. Here it is right here. Here it is right here. If you measure from here down to the grade, it exceeds sixteen feet.
So did the one we just passed, if you.
No, actually I went through that thing very carefully. It didn't exceed sixteen feet from grade to the ceiling to the top of the floor.
Okay. But some of it doesn't exceed sixteen feet, right?
Right.
Okay. That's, that's the only question I had.
Alright, thank you. Is the applicant or their architect available to, to, to speak? I see Jared Posky, yeah.
Let me know if you need to share anything, Jared.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I'll be brief. First of all, good evening. My name is Jared Posky. I'm here with Anton Hermes, our client. And the property owner and was Jessica Smith, the project architect. And as Anton will tell you, he's lived at this property for twenty six years and now it's his time. It's his turn to upgrade his house. I want to thank Kristin for her very thorough staff report. This is a non-conforming house built in nineteen oh seven on a super steep site. The staff report notes that besides requirements for designer view. The wings over fifteen feet tall, there are eight variances and exceptions required, which at first blush seemed daunting, but I wanted to briefly explain. We need a variance for the garage and the space under the garage to be in the twenty foot front yard setback. The house is on a steep hill. Clearly there's no other possible way to cite the garage. And because of the steep slope of a site, the rear of the garage has to exceed the fifteen foot height limit for accessory structures to speak out on a steep slope. These are easily supportive variances. We need a height exception permit for the existing house. This is an old house and we're not making it higher. We need a slope use permit. Again, it's a steep site and there's no way to avoid a slope use permit. And we need a fence height exception because walnut is above the main living areas and looks down until onto the outdoor spaces. So this leaves three issues. We need an FAR exception, a variance to add seventy two square feet to the existing ADU and a height variance for a portion of the proposed addition. So let me briefly discuss the FAR exception. Now, after you discount the garage and a few feet for the high ceiling spaces and mechanical space which is below, which is existing below the ADU. We are really proposing to add four hundred and eighty eight square feet to the main residence, living area of the house. So a hundred and two feet the upper level and three hundred and eighty six feet to the main level. The FAR, including the ADU, will include, will increase to thirty one percent. And in my opinion, having worked a lot in this area, th- this is a relatively minor addition that's still within the FARs, the prevailing FARs of the neighborhood. And most important, the highest house is cited so that no neighbors are impacted by these additions. No privacy loss, no sunlight and stone, and no negative impacts on the neighbors whatsoever. There's, as Kristen mentioned, there's a current, there's currently a one thousand ninety nine square foot ADU at the lower floor. And we had to build out this space to support the additions above. So in, indeed, the ADU is shown increasing to seventy two square feet to one thousand one hundred and seventy one. So reasonable two bedroom ADU, still no negative impacts to the neighborhood or nearby homes, and we have counted it in our FAR. I, I agree with Brock, it would be nice not to count it and there may be some, some ways around this, but this, the way, the nature of the steep site, the. The corner, the southeast corner of the ADU is slightly above the sixteen foot height limit. And lastly, we're asking for a height variance for some of the addition. The east, can you put on a three point seven?
A three point seven?
There, that's good. The east facade of the house, as you can see here, has a, has a group of gable roofs. The tip of the highest gable, the existing highest gable is forty two feet above grade and it's been that way for decades. We are proposing to remove one of the gables and to extend the width of this facade. Somebody extended with the new roof deck off the primary bedroom suite. And the deck is still a bit over thirty foot height limit, but is nineteen feet below the tallest gable. The grade slopes sharply, as you can see, to the south and east, so the deck is still thirty four and a half feet above grade. But it's mostly because this is a house, an existing house built on a very steep hillside. But in effect, I believe we're reducing the apparent height while widening this facade. And while widening the facade, we're creating a far more cohesive, unified, unified, far better proportioned elevation. With the use of dark sc- stucco, dark painted cement board siding, this darker elevation will visually recede into the wood hillside. And with the use of fire resistant materials on the exist, on the exterior, it'll be far more fire safe as a building. So I would argue that besides the five easily supportive variances, the FAR exceptions. The variance just slightly increased the size of the ADU and the redesign of the east facade makes sense for this home. Mister Hermes is here to like, make a few comments and Jess and I are happy to ask any questions you might have. Thank you.
Share screen.
I have no idea if you can see me or not. Or hear me for that.
If you, we can hear you, but if you want to just wait a moment, I could make it that you could be seen at least, just a moment. Here you go. Can you speak, you could speak now. Are you there?
He was Jared?
Yeah, he's with Jared.
Jared's muted.
Oh.
Okay, so, oh, I see. There we are. Okay, I got you.
And then can we control the screen? Share screen?
You can share a screen. You should be able to try.
Right, alright. Great.
Okay. Sorry, sorry for the delay. We're just trying to catch up on technology.
You should be.
We, we good to go? Alright, I assume everyone can hear me. We're okay to go? Yes, wonderful. Thank you. So first of all, thank you, Kristin, for the time you've spent with me in the past months and thank you to the commission for hearing me. My name's Anton Hermes. I've lived at ten Walnut Avenue for the past twenty six years. I'm going to try to make it brief this evening. I just want to touch a little bit on my history here, the history of the home and my proposal. To bring this home up to the current standard of design and safety. I'll do my best to keep this brief, but it was a lengthy staff report and there are a lot of issues that have been brought up that I'd like to speak to. Even though, a little bit about me, even though I've lived here for a quarter century. My connection to Larkspur goes back far beyond that. In the nineteen sixties, my first preschool was down in the canyon. In the nineteen seventies, I attended Neil Cummins. Grade school and we played at what everyone called the dark park right across the street from this house. In the nineteen eighties, I attended Brentwood High School. And in the nineties, I found this home. And immediately knew that it was my spot. And so as Jared pointed out, this is my chance. To realize a vision that I've been hanging on to for a long time. And it's a vision that we crafted with enormous care and that's why this is important to me and I want to speak to some of the issues that have been raised. About the home and the site. This home is located on a land peninsula between Walnut Avenue and Madron Avenue on a very steep slope. And I don't have any neighbors to the south, that is the, the public land. And it's bordered really by the walking path and that's it. So there are no neighbors on that side, no views to block. My neighbors across Walnut Avenue are, are at a much higher elevation. This is just setting the framework so we understand what we're talking about. The home was built originally circa nineteen oh six as a summer cabin and it was definitely built to the standards of its day. It was, just to frame this a little more, it was built before the Golden Gate Bridge existed. It was built before Walnut Avenue existed and it was built before there was a planning code with a height limit. At the time, the main entry was from the drone canyon and you can see in the bottom of the picture, those are the steps that still exist. And that was the original walk up. So, you know, there, there's really a history here of. How the house functions and how we're trying to make it function to meet really modern usage. In more recent decades, Larkspur adopted a planning code with a height restriction, which is the basis of a lot of the discussion today. Again, the contours of the hill, you can see the, have the most profound effect at the southeast corner. There's a little bit, you can see that the dotted line is the thirty, the current thirty foot height limit right there. And that'll appear. In, well, it appears right there as the, the height cloud that, that. Cloudy. White indicates. The thirty foot height limit. Just to be clear, sorry, I've lost my place here. Since adopting the height restriction, my home has been considered existing non-conforming as we all know. This is simply a historical fact. It's nobody's fault. It's simply that, you know, the, the. The rules have changed and we're trying to navigate. How to manage reasonable changes to this old house in a different era than it was built. In order to afford non-conforming homes like mine, so that I have the same rights to reasonable upgrades over time as my neighbors enjoy. The use of variances and exceptions are appropriate tools to accommodate a home that was built in a different era. And I think that's what I want to express is an important piece of what we're doing here today, discussing all these variances and exceptions. I want to go over the facts of my proposed project. And I just want to start with a statement upon reading the staff report. In the staff report is great and enormously detailed, but there are times where it speaks about. You know, tearing down and rebuilding, while that is certainly true for the car deck. It's a permitted car deck. It, it's, I disagree with that. Assessment for the main house. In fact, we've gone to great lengths to. Try and keep as much of the existing structure intact, following the same lines. And not tearing down this house. So I just want to point out, this is the north elevation. And you can see side by side, left is the existing house to the right is the proposed house. The, the ridge line is unchanged. The main ridge line, the east ridge line is unchanged. What we are changing is there are two shed roofs, yeah, as Jessica is currently drawing. That are not well integrated into the design. And so those, by making them gables, we are just simply better integrating existing space. Into the house. Now, there are some minor expansions, so just to be very clear. The gable to the right, we're, we're adding some minimal square footage, less than a hundred square feet under that. West facing gable. But really, the, the emphasis has been on good design and a very light touch. Jessica, why don't we go to that three D? Yeah, okay, so. I, I suspect this is what is. I'd like to. Share what I see in this, in this side by side. The existing is on the right, the proposed is on the left and above, above those two images are what people actually see from the park. The house is frankly extremely ugly now. It's not fire safe. And it's largely obstructed from view by the dense trees. If you look at the graphics, the bottom two, you'll see on the right that those two gables. Are remaining unchanged. The flat roof. To the, right there, is remaining unchanged. In fact, I'd like to point out that on the upper floor. We are asking for an addition of a hundred and two square feet. It's very minimal and I don't want to get into the details of where those hundred and two square feet show up, but none of it. On this southeast facing side, as Jared has already pointed out, we're reducing that third gable on the left. And reducing the, the verticality of the structure. And, and expanding it horizontally, which I think is just good design, honestly, and. I'll, I'll leave it at that. I want to speak also to the characterization of the ADU as sixteen. Having a sixteen foot ceiling. I, I, I'm not a planner. I don't propose to understand what you guys do exactly. But I will tell you that. We're measuring, we're including. Significant height underneath the floor of the ADU. I, I, if my understanding is correct, we're including. Crawls, it's just crawl space underneath the ADU. And yeah, where Jessica is drawing those lines, it's probably seven to eight feet when I stand under there. When I stand under there, it's just dirt and foundation and I don't have to crouch to stand under there. So I, I don't understand how that height is included in the height of the ADU. It seems nonsensical. And again, this is not to be argumentative, but it just doesn't make sense to me. The ADU is existing, so even though the existing. Is I think a thousand ninety nine square feet, we're asking for a very minor seventy two foot extension for good reason. I'd be happy to discuss storage space, et cetera. But I, I think somehow it's, I, I've. The, the conversation seems to not match the reality on the ground, which is we have an existing ADU. These things are extremely valuable. We're not trying, meaning to lifestyle, not just financially. I'm not ever selling this house, by the way. I'm, I'm a lifer here. So. So, you know, this, this makes sense for our community and the seventy two square foot ask. Is extremely reasonable, especially when it serves the function of supporting the space above it. I want to wrap up by saying we've taken great care to design a modest and thoughtful plan. Which maintains and honors most of the existing structure while bringing the house into a modern standard of design, safety and efficiency. And in closing, I would just like to say that. You know, I've had a dream of. Properly designing and building this house. Currently, it sits on some broken foundation, et cetera. I've had that dream for twenty plus years. This is the right time for me to do it, even though the cost is going to be exorbitant. But I found my place in this dysfunctional old house. And I can imagine spending time in the newly created outdoor spaces, sitting in the sunshine, not carrying my mountain bike up three flights of stairs. And I feel like the changes I've proposed are modest and thoughtful and we've designed with a light touch. And with the support of my neighbors, with significant improvements to safety and with no negative impacts. I ask that you please allow me to realize this dream and this project.
Thank you very much for your, your comments and presentation. Do we have any questions for the applicant or his architect? Nothing. Okay, do we have any comments from the public?
Actually, I have a quick question for Jared. Natasha, if he's still there.
I'm letting him speak. There you go.
Jared?
Brock?
Just a quick question. I, I still understand the ADU for area issue, but, or why you can't subtract it. But. Would you consider, if, if you pulled that ADU back to where it was? That wall, the dining room's huge. You could either keep a longer cantilever or, or shorten the dining room slightly, but it looks to me like you could. If you have the floor plan somewhere.
We're looking at a paper version right now.
Yeah, I'm looking at a moving version.
Well, you know, obviously.
Well, you know, obviously Brock, we, we would rather avoid a long cantilever, we love to just build. I think it looks nicer from below than we were posing to build up the lower floor ADU. That extra seventy-two feet to be underneath the dining. Is it possible? Of course it's possible, I think it would, I, I don't know how that would. Would help the massing, I mean, the whole point of FAR is, is height, mass and bulk, and I think actually it would look better. Without a cantilever, but i- is it possible? Yes, it's possible. I can't argue that.
Yeah, I was just looking, I don't know if you can see the arrow I'm pointing at, but if the dining, the dining room's pretty wide, you could pull that cantilever back. And again, I'm not suggesting you do it, I was just wondering if, if that made any difference in terms of leaving the ADU. As it was.
Well, you know, the, the, we've spent a lot of time. Trying to make the main space, the kitchen, the dining room and the outdoor space and living really sing, because like, like Anton said, this is going to be a very expensive proposition. And the, the size and shape and configuration of the dining room is really critical to the enjoyment of the most important space in the house that. That's through the, you know, the living room, kitchen and dining room, so that, that's where it is, that's where we, we love it to be, that's the dream. And it would certainly be nice if we built underneath that rather than cantilever the dining room. But is it possible to reduce the size of the ADU? It's possible, but it seems like a technicality that, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna reduce the height, mass and bulk of the project.
Could, could I make a quick comment? You know, one thing I didn't mention is. We've tried to organize the, the new floor plan around the current entry and the living room. And so it's not willy nilly, as has been suggested, that I am. Just rebuilding everything, we've really tried to be thoughtful about bringing the, the living spaces. That everybody in the modern day sort of expects into the south facing sun. With access to some outdoor space that doesn't currently exist, so the, these are sound. You know, these are sound ideas. And it's not so easy to just redistribute, it's easy to say the words, but not so easy to actually work out in practice.
I definitely understand.
All right, thank, any other questions? Or, no, okay, I see one hand up in. In our attendee list.
I'm gonna call on Jean Marie first, you're allowed to talk. I might have, let's see, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, actually, I'm so glad I'm not on video too, it's, you know, speaker's nervousness, but. I, you know, despite. You know, my joy of waiting, you know, till, you know, till eight thirty to speak and. Being a nervous speaker, I really wanted to get over that to support. This project because I. I just really appreciate the elements that Anton has pulled together in this. Design, I mean, people have, I, and I did write a letter, and so I'm gonna try not to be completely redundant. From what I wrote in the letter, so you all don't fall asleep on me here, but. You know, the energy efficiency and the fire safety, of course, and the additional parking. The attractive entry, they're all. Going to be great additions, and as I'm looking at this rendition of it, the, I just have to say that those. The roof lines as opposed to the current sheds, I think are such a huge improvement. I walk around this neighborhood, I've lived here for over thirty years. I predate Anton, when I first moved in here, this was a home for disabled girls. And it retains some of the characteristics currently of that, and the house has aged a lot. I think what this design does is it really lifts this place and makes it beautiful, it enhances. The whole design, the neighborhood look and feel, the entrance, and it really takes advantage of the woodsy-ness. That we're so lucky to have right around this area, when you look up from this house too, from Dark Park or Madrone. You know, what I think is coming, if this is approved, is much more attractive. Than what you see now from there and from the Walnut Street area, it, there's very little impact to us and for. The neighbors who are up on the hill above Anton, we really don't see much of it at all. It feels to me that the design really works as a whole. That the variances and exceptions help this come together in one design. They make it more, I guess, valuable, more beautiful, a better usage and. I guess I would ask then that he get approval to move ahead with the design as it is. It feels right to me and I think it'll be an asset to the neighborhood.
Right, thank you very much, I believe that was the number nineteen Walnut Avenue. Resident. There's another two hands, oh.
Oh, sorry, James Holmes has his hand up.
Yeah, can I just remind that to keep comments to three minutes, please?
James Holmes, this house already towers over the park in a way that no other structure does, in this case, the neighbors are, are the public. So I think the concern that the staff has highlighted is quite appropriate because it relates to the location of the addition. Quote, I think is, "A three-story addition with rooftop deck on the steepest and most visible portion of the home. When viewed from Madrone." That is just not consistent with the concept of mass and, and bulk minimization. And as the staff has pointed out, doesn't really seem to. Result from the, the terrain, there are a lot of variances which are warranted by the terrain, but, but not, not putting. More mass and bulk right essentially in the visibility of the park. And although it's proposed to paint it a darker color, we know from experience that paint is not a permanent. Way to, to minimize mass and bulk, so the, while many of this aspect, many of the aspects of this. Proposal are, are, are appropriate and, and the garage. The added mass and bulk in the area most visible to the public just doesn't meet the relevant standards. As the staff has very correctly pointed out, thank you. Well, I had one, the staff has also pointed out, I think, three specific ways to correct this, and I think that if those. Points were implemented, then the project would be approvable, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler Peterson, you're allowed to talk?
Great, thank you. Yes, this is Tyler Peterson, I am a neighbor across the street at twenty-three Walnut, so. Not directly across the street, but just across and over one home next to Jean Marie. I've actually had an opportunity to pour over the plans and I'm very pleased with. What I've seen put, put forth from Anton. Not on, not only does. The overall height of the property stay the same. The new roof lines, I think, will be much more aesthetically pleasing. And to the point of the roof deck, that area actually brings the height of the gable down, and it'll be. A nice open outdoor area, and so I think looking up from Madrone, it'll actually be a, a more pleasant view and knowing Anton. And his family, you know, that'll be probably a nice garden space, so it'll, it'll complement. The neighborhood overall. You know, generally, the house today, I hate to say it, it's not, it's not, I mean, it's a, it's a beautiful old house, but. You know, it is so much, it is somewhat of a large mass and can be seen as more of an eyesore. The new cladding, the new roof, I think that'll really update the look and feel and add to the overall aesthetic of the neighborhood. The garage will be a great addition, obviously having more parking on, on this part of the road is, is important factor. It's a, it's a tough spot for us overall for, for parking. The fact that Anton has actually created two. Neighborhood parking spots that encroach on his property today, I think is a good indication of his willingness to support the neighbors. And then, just as a neighbor, Anton is a fantastic neighbor who's thoughtful, he's very frequently hosting. You know, anyone in the neighborhood who's, who's willing to come spend some time with him. And I'm confident that as he approaches this project overall, he'll be very considerate to the rest of the folks in the neighborhood. Thank you. So with that, my, I give Anton my support for this project.
Thank you, I see one more hand up.
I see a hand raised, but I think it's still, Mr. Holmes, would you like to take his call?
Does he have further comments on this property? Maybe he just accidentally left it out, oh.
No, I, I just wanted to add, my, my recollection, which goes back an awfully long way, is that. The additional parking spaces were not created by, by the applicant, but were, but, but predated it by, by many decades. And as a matter of fact, I know that when, when there was, when the city was proposed to give up some area. I made a point before the Public Works Department to ensure the preservation of those parking spaces. So they, they predate the current applicant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I don't see any other hands raised.
Great, thank you, in that case, let's close public portion part of this hearing. And bring it back to the commission. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Wagstaff to share his comments, please.
Okay, thanks. So. Is Jared said this, or somebody said this house was originally built in nineteen oh six and. I've been going to Dark Park for a very long time, sixty or seventy years or whatever, and that house has always been kind of for me. Part of Dark Park, it was up there and you could see it and we always wondered who lived there. And for the most part, I think what they've done is, is a really great job of creating the same feeling. It's not really any higher than the other one, than the other house, it's not higher at all. And I think it has more form and interest than, than the house that's there, and obviously it's gonna be something that's. Substantially better built. My one reservation is the, the dining room protrusion, that sort of. Element that comes out further along the line, but when I looked at it today is with the story poles. It's pretty well hidden, and I think the colors will, will keep it that way, so. I think I could probably make findings for it, I, as I said, I do have reservations about the, the one element that, that comes out, but. I think they've done a really nice job architecturally.
Thank you, Commissioner Swisher.
Yeah, like Brock, I'm gonna be agreeing with Brock a lot tonight, I think. I, you know, took my kids when they were young to the Dark Park, we always looked up at that house, and I think I made some story about it being haunted. Because I heard some stories, you know, from way back, but, so. You know, in reference to the gentleman who made the comment that it's, you know, the massing issue. I think this design improves the massing issues considerably. The gables are very nice, it takes away some of the blocky nature of the existing house and makes it flow a little bit better. I mean, certainly you can't reduce the house, I mean, as, as an existing house, and so how do you improve it? I think Jared has done a great job in doing a design that improves it. I like, specifically, I like the extension to the, to the side. Where that one long blocky structure was, I think it's really nice now, it, it makes it, it better. So. I am in favor of this, I think it's an improvement of the existing, and I think in an ideal world, if we could shrink the house a bit, that'd be great, but we, we can't do that. So I'm in favor of it as it stands.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I, I, I like the dark colors of the house, I, I think the garage, adding the garage is a great idea. The space below it seems like it is a good idea as well. I, 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 I do kinda. Have some reservations about that dining room area and I guess with it, the, the ADU area below. As well, it seems like it's. You know, with the, the foundation elements below that, it, it is a pretty tall structure when you're looking at it from. From the path and the park below. So I, I think I'm generally in. Agreement with the, with the, the city staff. In that, I, I'd like to see if there's potentially another way to. To lay out the floor plan or. Potentially lower the, some of the roof lines to, to maybe make that structure not. Exceed that, the height as much, I, I understand with the slope that, that may be difficult to do, but to lower it a little bit as we can, so. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. So, yes, so like everyone said, I think it's a very attractive, beautiful design. I, having read the staff report carefully, I do understand the staff's concerns. About the fact that the, the roof height is. Very much exceeding the, the thirty foot height limit and where the applicant is sort of. Not solving for that, but just kind of adding to that, but, but in. But it is on a very steep slope, and I think it is a very attractive design. And I think that we can make a sort of an exception in this case, but it would, we'd want that written carefully into our notes and into. Our approval of this, that it's really because of a special circumstance of this property that we would agree to that. So that's on the, the height issue. My two main concerns here, and I think that probably ties into the dining room, but really well on the ADU, I think. It's a fortunate benefit of our time that we can just put these ADUs in right now. And it shouldn't really be abused, and if we can keep that to the thousand square feet, that would be my preference. It's already in there, it's already, you know, we can just now legalize it, so. I'm not an architect, so I don't know if that's feasible or possible, I'd love to hear from the architect if, if that can be done or not, and if that ties in. With Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Wagstaff's concern on the dining room, that's great, but I can't speak to that. But I would like to sort of see the rules being followed on that. And then my other kind of question that I had raised was on the fence, I know they've applied for a fence height exception. I think where they're planning to locate the fence is fine, but I don't see why it has to be six feet. It's not a, so it's, it's a fairly quiet street, and if they can reduce the fence height. That would be my preference, it's a beautiful street. The neighbors don't have such a high six foot fence, they actually had like a see-through fence, and if there's a, a lower fence that they could put in, that would be my preference as well. Do we want as a commission to discuss the, any, anything further, or should we just? Do you think we need to dive, can we just dive in for a motion that addresses these comments?
I think we need to discuss a little bit further if, if, if we can.
Yes.
If, if we decide that we don't want to approve it as is. We need to be pretty clear to the applicant what we're trying to ask him to do. And. Because it, you know, it takes.
I agree.
Time and energy to, to change things.
And money.
And money.
Yes. So do we think as a, as a commission, then we want to have the applicant look further into the ADU issue? So do we think as a, as a commission, then we want to have the applicant look further into the ADU issue?
I, from my perspective, just speaking for me, I, I think the ADU is already there. And I don't think it affects the, the form of the main building in a big sense. I think my concern is that, is the dining room that, that sort of pushes out away from the form of what pretty much mimics the old, the old building. And if there's a way to drop that back, it would be nice to see if there isn't a really logical way. And I, I'm not trying to design this project, so I don't know what the, the owner, the architect feel about that. But that would be my, that would be my wish if we could do anything.
Would that also solve for the staff's concern that the ADU is over the one thousand maximum square feet?
Kristen would have to, are you there, Kristen? I you're muted.
Brock's solution does not keep the unit at its existing square footage. He would, what I'm hearing is he would allow the expansion, but you're more concerned with the upper floor above and how it extends out further and higher. I'm struggling to understand what, what the findings would be to exceed the floor area on the ADU, because it's, if you look at the findings for variance, it's based on the physical limitations of the site, but the physical limitations of the site haven't really limited the ADU. It's already over. So
I'm, I'm just gonna put in, I, I, you know, from a design perspective, and you know, I'm not an architect, you know, I'm an anesthesiologist. But the, I think that the dining room addition is actually, is, oh, secondly, I'll call you back. It's actually aesthetically pleasing to me because it spreads out the bulk of the house. And, and so I, I don't, I wouldn't touch that. I think it's a really nice design and it's integral to the, what, what, what they're trying to accomplish here.
And I actually tend to agree with Jeff on that one, on that side of the house as well. I think my concern is more with the ADU and I'm just sort of more rule oriented here, that we need to see why or have a good reason as to why we're permitting the addition, the additional, what is it, two hundred square feet? What is it? One hundred square feet on the ADU? Seventeen on the, on the ADU?
But Kristen, if I understand it correctly, they have not, they're not even treating that floor area as an ADU. They just added it in, in the total square footage.
No, they're expanding the second bedroom and creating a more mechanical area for it. It's a, it's a few little things.
But
But you're correct, it's included in the floor area that
It's included in the floor area.
Oh. So why is this a concern then? Why are we, why is it? If it's already included in the floor area?
It is included in the floor area.
It's included over, it's just because it's over a thousand, which is the limit for the second units. I, I wouldn't, I, I don't think you should struggle with just approving us. I mean, I think that's one of the reasons for approving it would be to allow a standard sized second bedroom for that unit. And one that's not in, in the dark, you know, on the hillside side of the house. So I think it, it's not, I, I wouldn't have a concern with it also if it weren't for the room above it that was sort of creating that, that issue. But I think the, the expansion of the second unit itself isn't very large. Part of it is the mechanical room.
It's, it's literally just that amount, I think, or something like
It's just a, it's a small amount that makes that bedroom a, a more standard size.
And I think I'm less concerned if it's already included in the square footage.
It is.
Okay. So my only then main issue was really the fence. I would love them to know, because they're fence then. And not have a big six foot wall. Any, any additional comments from anyone else?
I, I still am, I'm struggling with the, the ADU, why, why we would be expanding that, you know, what, what our reason would be for expanding that. Looks like we've got a couple of, you know, reasons why, why we'd be, you know, permitted to expand that. So I was just curious to hear Kristen's thoughts on that.
It's technically not an ADU because they haven't deducted the square footage.
Well, it's, it is an ADU. And I guess one, one other reason in support just from housing policy is that most of the ADUs are studio units or one bedroom units. And this one actually is, allows a larger family or household to live there. So it does provide more opportunities for housing in our neighborhoods in a different size. So that would be another reason. That's not a strict variance finding, but I think the, it definitely is supported by housing law and policy to try to encourage a unit of a different size. If you could, if you could support the floor area and the bulk of mass that's created by that.
Does that help? Liam?
I think. Yeah, yeah, I think that, that helps. I mean, it looks like it's essentially like Brock was saying, caused by the addition of the dining room above. You, you're gonna have closed in space below.
As Jared said, that's, that's the line. I, I guess my pointer doesn't show up with you guys, but, but you can see the line of that, that, that line is the only expansion they've done. They went out three feet farther so that the cantilever of the dining room wasn't as, as large. They could have a bigger cantilever of the dining room, which might look odder than, than it does, you know, than a shorter cantilever. So
Okay.
I think I could make findings for approval as, as is. I think it's
Okay.
I don't know that, that we're gonna you know, whether you could shift the dining room and whether that would make it better or not. It's up for, it's a, it's a question and an expensive question.
Yeah. And then Kristen, can we, can we make a note that this has got a special circumstances, which is why we've agreed to the additional height?
Yeah, I'll have to bring you back findings that identify those special circumstances.
What about the fact that it was built in nineteen oh six and it, I know it's not on the historic registry, but it's been there a really long time and people have been looking at that ridge at the, at that exceeding height for a long time also. So they're really just mimicking what, what's there. Are they not?
If that's what you wanna say, I'll say it.
Yeah, and I think also the height, like, I mean, they're not gonna pull the, the house like down. And what they're actually doing, I think to Jeff's comment, and I think the, the architect may have made the same comment is they're widening it. So actually looks a little better now. As opposed to keeping it straight up and down, like a sort of a tall column. And if you did pull down the sides, I kind of, I was, I went and had a look at it and was thinking of like, if they, if the two sides were shorter, it just might look a little strange. If we but it seems to be in proportion right now. But sort of the best they can do is what they have.
I mean, I think that's exactly right, Natasha. I think it's in proportion, you know, now and it, by widening it out, you decrease the effect of massing. I mean, as, as to is it, is it Colin? I'm all in favor of rules. Like, I don't think that, you know, you should be stealing SCIF documents from the White House, but I, I think that this is not a, you know, a violation of rules that is that important.
So does somebody wanna make a motion or should I make a try at it?
Do we want to include the fence or?
I'm not as concerned with the fence, but if you want to include it, we can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not either.
Okay. I, I like the idea of just not having the, the six foot tall fence. And I, like I said, it was a beautiful street, it's a beautiful view. It seems a shame, but I will again defer to what the majority of the commission says. So
What's allowable on it, at that level? Do you know?
Forty-two inches.
Forty-two inches. Let's, let's go for forty-two inches. Okay?
No problem with that.
Do you wanna? Would you like to make a motion?
So essentially you're denying the height exception because you're putting it to what's permitted. The fence height exception.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yes. So I would move approval of Design Review twenty-one forty-five ten Walnut Avenue, including the floor area ratio exception, the height exception, the variance to the height limit to allow new additions to the residence, variance to construct in addition that would expand an existing two bedroom second unit totaling one thousand ninety-nine square feet to one thousand one hundred and seventy-one square feet. A variance to the fifteen foot height limit for accessory structures to allow a new two-story garage and carport, variance to the twenty-foot front yard setback to permit a two-story garage and slope use permit. And
That's it.
And that's it. And I don't know if we have to say denial of the fence, fence height exception or, or what that would properly do. I guess we wouldn't approve it.
You should deny it so it's clear for the record.
So denial of the fence height exception to the standard forty-two inch.
Up, yeah.
Can we have a second? Can I second my? Thank you. Great. So can we have a roll call, please, Kristen?
Commissioner Swisher?
Aye.
Commissioner, I can't read. Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Aye.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
So for the record, that's four I's and one, one absent T.
I noticed that Jared Polsky's hand was up. I didn't know if he, if it was, it's too late for him to speak. Are we?
You've made a motion and voted.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are we moving on? Yes, okay. All right, well, that concludes the two hearing matters. Now, let me get my agenda. Kristen, you took it off the screen. We'll go, I think the approval of the minutes.
We can't, can we? I wasn't there and it's just the two of you or can
Oh. So should we wait till the next meeting before we approve it?
Are we ever gonna have? Well, we have three people that will be at the end of the meeting.
I think that the majority of the members who were present can still vote to approve it. And even the members who weren't present, if you've read them or or watched the meeting, you can say that they are a representation of the meeting you watched.
It was a fairly short set of meetings.
I, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Then I guess I should second because I also attended.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Aye.
Commissioner Swisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Aye.
And Commissioner Campbell, you can abstain if you wish.
I'll abstain.
So that was three I's, one abstention and one absence.
Thank you. And Planning Commissioners reports, do we have any tonight?
I don't have a report, but I would like to run something by everybody relative to what we keep dealing with over and over again, which is the slope use ordinances. You've got a seventeen thousand square foot lot, which is the last one we heard. And you're allowed an eight hundred and fifty square foot house by our code. So we have to do this for every lot that has slope. And this is one of the few cities that does that. And it probably should, needs to be taken up with the city council. And I'm willing to do that, but it's something that we keep running into over and over again. And I guess it does give you the ability to turn down a project that you don't like very much, just by the FAR exception. But I just thought I'd get other people's opinions on, on that.
I think I need to clarify because I spoke to Brock today. He's, he's actually referring to the residential floor area ratio chapter, which reduces floor area based on slope. It's tied to slope and hillside, but it's not directly the slope and hillside that's causing this.
And because it's on the agenda, we can't discuss it, but if you wanted to discuss putting it on an agenda to discuss, we could do that for a future meeting if people are interested in discussing it.
We also have a little lesson about.
I had suggested to Brock that he bring it up to see if anybody wanted to put it on the agenda for discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I do agree that it comes up a lot. I would love a, maybe a quick lesson on why it was there in the first place and what it achieves, just so we understand fully. Maybe that we can do at the next meeting too.
Can we, can we do that?
Um, there may not be any items for the next meeting, but I would also love for Kristen to help this before she retires since she has so much history. So maybe the second meeting in September, there'd be time possibly. Or at least she could maybe at least get, get some background together. So someone else could bring it.
Happy to.
Thank you.
So if we don't have a next meeting, we will be continuing the findings for this project to the second meeting of September.
Right.
You know what I forgot to say is that the ten day, ten day appeal process, right? On each of those projects. I just realized that.
I, I
And nobody jumped in to remind me.
I suspect that since you made decisions that they, they, they're not gonna be coming in for building permit in the next four weeks, they'll probably be okay with waiting for the next meeting.
Okay, that's my big Planning Commissioner report.
Thank you. In that case, can we have a motion for John?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
We don't need a roll call for that, right? We can just all say yes.
It's okay.
We all wanna do it.
Unless you want to.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Excellent job, Natasha.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, good job, Natasha.
Good job. A lot of people for a first meeting.
Yeah.
Not really.